We used to go to Tarpon Springs right by there lots of to eat, you know, we wanted to eat that place. Yeah, 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 yeah. You're right, that's exactly.
Now it's open.
Yes, yeah, yeah, now it's all closed. It's time, right? That's good to know. So. And the community, yes. I totally found that too. I saw one of your boys at the grocery store. Maybe he was shot. Yeah. He was very proud of his gun. Yes, that's the secret. Proper Friday.
I'm just keeping the same. We will call our November the sixth, twenty twenty-three meeting to order. And we're glad to have this good crowd here today. And we will move right along. I want to read first public comment period. There's certain things that has to be carried out in the public comments. The time limit for any comment to the board is three minutes. Board members are not expected to comment or take any action on matters during public comment. Any individual speaking during public comment shall address the entire board. Any person who willfully interrupts, disrupts the session will be asked to leave the meeting. If you would like to speak to agenda item which we don't sign up anymore.
Yes.
On the agenda, we sign up on that, but not on the public comments. When it comes to public comment, if you want to speak, just raise your hand and I will recognize you to come to the podium. All right, we'll move right along. Our invitation, will you lead us, Mr. Woody Hall Young?
Let's pray. Our Heavenly Father, thank you, Lord, for this beautiful day. Your Heavenly Father, with the blessings which know all come from your boundless hand. Your Heavenly Father, we ask you, Lord, to be with us as we carry on the county's business. Your Heavenly Father, help pure will to be done for him. We thank you and praise you for all things, especially for Jesus, which in his name we pray. Amen.
Amen. If you would, that sounds thin. And we'll ask Dennis to lead us in a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a big agenda today. We had two hundred and seventy-nine pages to go over during the agenda. So we're going to try to move along just as quick as we can. That was our homework. Okay, three point two A proclamations and awards.
So commissioners, before you have a resolution regarding the support of the operation Green Light for veterans, and I will paraphrase the resolution. Whereas the residents of Avery County have great respect, admiration, and utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have successfully served our country and this community in the armed forces. And whereas Avery County appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes special recognition should be granted, therefore be resolved with designation as a green light for veterans, Avery County hereby declares through Veterans Day, November eleventh, twenty twenty-three, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifice of our men and women in uniform, transitioning from active service, therefore be it further resolved that in observance of Operation Green Light, Avery County encourages its citizens, patriotic tradition and patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who've made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying a green light in a window of their place of business or residence. Adopted this the sixth day of November, twenty twenty-three.
I think we had this last year and it went real well and we wanted to do it again this year to recognize our veterans. So if you need a green light, you can check at the hardware store or some of the stores and Lowe's I know has them. So if you want to burn a green light in honor of the veterans, get you one and put it outside or inside in front of the window and feel honored to do that. All right, do I hear?
Okay.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I moved to adopt the special election.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Sure.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, likewise. All right. Three point two B, public comment. All right, that's Hank Harkin. If you come to the podium, please.
What did you got this on the paper? Oh, that's not. Three minutes, never have I ever talked for three minutes. Are you timing?
Yes.
Damn. But.
Yeah, it already started when they called.
Thank you, shoot. Thank you so much for having me up here. I want your opinion, I need your help to solve a problem. Avery County High School needs a full-blown wrestling facility. We have men's team, a women's team, a middle school team, and then we have little kids. How do you suggest that we can do this? In nineteen ninety-two, I went to go solve this problem and Mr. Boyd Berry, the assistant superintendent, said, Hank, don't do that because that would solve the problem of needing, fulfill the problem of needing auxiliary gym. The auxiliary gym's been on a five-year plan since nineteen sixty-eight and it's never been done. So he didn't want me to mess that up. So in nineteen seventy-nine, I did my student teaching in Avery underneath Elmer Aldrich. I saw as a PE coach ludicrousness of trying to hold PE outdoors in Avery County weather. We needed much more space, we needed an auxiliary gym forever, weather-wise. In the ninety, I became the wrestling coach, see, of course, as fast as I can. And it was ludicrous. I'd have four baseball, four basketball practices and then we have to kick them off to be able to put the match down. It was not good for athletics. We need an auxiliary gym. Right there is a plans for a seventy by hundred and twenty by sixteen high metal building. Two weeks ago, I could have bought it for seventy-five thousand dollars, all the metal. Well, then I, and it's a forty-pound weight, snow load, da-da-da-da-da. But then I started doing figure and it's going to cost three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, hundred and fifty, just for the heating and air conditioning, for the ventilation. So the cost of insulation and everything else, it's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we're doing a lot of work ourselves. But that's a fully finished dressing room. Now I know the process, each school puts in a request for capital outlay. The capital outlay goes to the school administrators and then they prioritize one, two, three, four, five. That hasn't worked for fifty-five years. It's not worked to have an auxiliary gym. So Phillip just said, have I been to the high school? Uh, yes. Have I been to the school board? Though they know. It's not working, how do we do it? I've been to IRC, I've called Osmar, the guy who owns it down in Osmar. I've been to Lowe's, I've been inside Lowe's, I've gotten everything, I have four plans, I have everything for Lowe's. But then we, Dogtown doesn't need to do all this modification and then they tear it down in two years. That's the problem with it. I've been to Rare Woods, I've been to D Clark. Everybody who has any building, anywhere, anyhow, anyway. Now we have a five oh, a five oh one C three. That's what Dogtown runs on, we're doing it all ourselves. Do we do that again? Do we just keep doing that? Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the best I've ever done.
My bad, didn't time how fast it went, did it? Might have broke a record. All right, Tiffany, did you want to speak?
Good afternoon, I just wanted to give the board just a brief update on Western Youth Network. In Avery, we have our mentoring program, we have an office in Avery across from Sugar Mountain, and then we have the prevention programming that I oversee also here in Avery. But our biggest news is that we received a huge grant from federal government that's managed by the CDC to focus on our youth and prevention of substance misuse. So I wanted just to come today and make you all aware of that. This grant lasts for five years and then we'll be eligible for applying for additional funding for years six through ten. So it's just a really big opportunity for our county to invest in our youth and really, you know, pour into them on substance misuse prevention. I just wanted to make you guys aware. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there anyone else here to speak in public comment? Uh-huh, it's Virginia.
Is there anybody else?
No, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you.
In this small town, I found numbers of homeless veterans. We took care of them immediately. And I googled the SSBF program and called Asheville to no avail. In this small town, I went to the BSO and left a message, we needed help, and nothing. In this small town, after a week of nothing, I called again and left messages with BSO and Asheville, and nothing from the BSO, and Asheville sent some temporary assistance after fourteen days of my screaming for help. In this small town, I realized what was happening to American warriors. Their families were being destroyed in their deepest, darkest hours, crisis. In this small town, I continued to act and care for the veterans myself. In this small town, I obtained the support of two local people and obtained a temporary location for American warrior families to gain shelter and recognition and one business for food for those veterans and their families and one organization for shelter of single warriors. In this small town, I then emailed county commissioners for help, to no reply, let alone to no avail. In this small town, I then met with Congressional Representative Fox at a memorial day ceremony almost two years ago now, was told to wait six months to discuss anything about it. I waited eight months and then I was handed a stack of papers, requests for applications by an assistant so big you could burn all winter long to keep warm just to try to get help. I simply asked for a letter from the Congress lady stating that I was helping veterans in crisis. She wouldn't even write such a letter, even though it was requirement to get the help needed from the federal level. In this small town, I met local and transplant veterans and found out how people were feeling and what they were saying and what was not being said. It wasn't very good.
You have thirty seconds.
In this small town, I learned about generations of the leaders of the community, the county commissioners, the mayors, city officials, the sheriffs, their deputies, the political organizations, the veterans organizations, the businesses, foundations, and organizations within the community and surrounding area. In this small town, I learned the culture and its people on veterans topics. In this small town, I emailed the county manager, it was ignored. In this small town, I found out this.
Two minutes and fifty-nine seconds.
All right, anyone else?
In this small town, I came before the county commission and asked for veterans to be given priority, it was denied. In this small town, I asked for grants to help veterans in crisis, it was denied. Where funds were being given for things that just aren't needed. In this small town, I asked BMW, if they had heard of any homeless veterans, the answer was yes. In this small town, I asked the DAV, if they had heard of any homeless veterans, the answer was yes. In this small town, I'm warned of the need for community support and healing, for the mental health of my brothers and sisters to no avail. And veterans committed suicide unable to get the help they needed. In this small town, there's no foundation of human dignity, not a hygiene facility for veterans in crisis, not a community center, not a support center, nothing. In this small town, over a million dollars are going to crackheads and convicts while veterans are complaining that their veteran services officer are inexperienced and incapable and dishonest. In this small town, I decided to go to DC, Washington DC, and discuss what's really going on in small-town America with veterans in crisis and their families, to no avail. In this small town, they do news stories about people like me building gardens for veterans to feed them organic wholesome foods and emergency shelters to protect their families while they go through their crisis and programs to help them reintroduce into society or to get out of the addictions and situations that they find themselves in. And trying to get law enforcement, vehicles for agencies, and other equipment and support. With very little response. In this small town, those very businesses you thought would help in these types of crisis situations are the very businesses we see crying poor, not calling us back, ignoring the request and spreading lies. In this small town, for helping veterans, asking for help for veterans and saying what others won't. I've been threatened with bodily harm, my property vandalized, had the law call on me, and scoffed dead, told to go home. told to go home by county officials, and much, much more. In this small town, so-called religious leaders make promises and don't keep them. In this small town, people promise World War II.
Are there any?
In this small town, so-called religious leaders make promises and don't keep them. In this small town, people promise World War II veterans things that they're going to do and never even have the decency to show them. In this small town, veterans in crisis that aren't from here are oftentimes called transients, and are shunned or shuffled along. In this small town, there are few who truly do care for their warriors without any strings attached. And for those folks, I'm very grateful. In this small town, we are seeing the decay of our nation from within. In this small town, funding is provided to organizations that blatantly, without hesitation, have preference to illegals over American veterans in crisis and utilize the proper pronouns while doing it without shame. In this small town, funds, millions of dollars, are accepted from foundations and organizations that support BLM, LGBTQ, defund the police, pronouns, and other antics, et cetera. In this small town, crackheads and convicts are given sympathy and assistance while their victims suffer in anguish and veterans live on the streets. In this small town, inquiry, informative emails go unanswered by elected officials. In this small town, there is now volunteers. Avery County reports that they helped. I'm sorry. In this small town, Avery County volunteers report that they helped people with food, 359; fuel, 359; assistance with housing, 327; medical needs, 96; transportation, 77; clothing, 122. The total number of clients served by them, 1,365. Well, guess what? In this small town, and in every small town across America, 10% on average of those.
You have 30 seconds.
The 10% of them.
You've said your public comment.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. We have anyone else that wants to speak in public comment? If not, we'll move right along with our agenda. 3.2C Board of Point. One, Rural Transportation Advisory Committee.
So the board you have in front of you, uh, Mr. Woodhull Young Jr. has, is currently on the Rural Transportation Advisory Committee, and Mr. Young is willing to be reappointed to this committee. Move to point.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise.
Thank you.
Mr. Wood Young.
Thank you, sir.
Been reappointed.
Thank you.
All right. 3.2, number two. Review of Applications for Economic Development Committee. Avery Fire Commission, Morris Library Board, Child Vitality Board.
Okay. These are for review, and we will take these matters up next meeting. So for Economic Development Committee, we have Logan Burleson, Avery Fire Commission, Scott Heath, the Morrison Library, Anita Johnson, and Child Vitality Board, Rachel Teller.
All right. We'll review those in December the, oh, there is it, our next meeting?
Phew. December 4th.
October 4th.
All right. We'll take that back up on December the 4th. All right. 3.3, our county commissioner and staff items. A, Avery County Habitat for Humanity. And I believe the lady's here to come up and talk to us about that habitat.
Uh, thank you for the opportunity to be here today. Um, I'm Melanie Bergen. Um, I've been, uh, the executive director with Avery County Habitat, uh, for, uh, years since, um, August. Um, I've been with Avery Habitat for 19 years total. Uh, I was the Office and Programs Manager for the, my first 18 years. We are a, a local grassroots Christian housing ministry, formed in '91 by Avery County citizens, incorporated as a Christian nonprofit religious organization under North Carolina law and voluntarily affiliated with Habitat International. We build houses in Avery County with low-income families in the name of Jesus Christ. Uh, we're founded on the conviction that every man, woman, and child should have a simple, decent, affordable place to live in dignity and safety. We have successfully completed the building of 53 homes in Avery County. And that is a tangible witness that we, uh, that the people of Avery County love and care for each other. We're not a giveaway program. Uh, we often say we're a hand up, not a hand out. Uh, homeowners invest hundreds of hours of their own labor, sweat equity into building their houses and, uh, and the houses of others. We require each adult to work a minimum of 250 hours volunteering with us on our construction sites, uh, in our restore office. And also, um, we, just a couple of years ago, started, uh, allowing our families to put in sweat equity hours at other nonprofits in the county. So they don't just help Habitat. They help other nonprofits. Um, our families put in the sweat equity hours, and, um, they're also required to put in $1,800 um, to go toward closing costs when we do close on a house with them. And that, that becomes their escrow account. It pays their insurance for the first year, their property taxes, um, closing fees, all of those things. And they buy their house from Habitat and make modest monthly house payments. No interest or profit is ever charged to the homeowners. Uh, last year, our homeowners contributed over $15,000 in Avery County property taxes. Uh, contributions come to us in the form of formal, I'm sorry, in the form of financial donations, foundation grants, and contributions of household items that we offer for resale at the Habitat Restore. And, uh, and also the payments, uh, to the principal, um, portion of the homeowner's mortgage payments is another form of income for Habitat. Completed houses are sold to our partner families at no profit and are financed with affordable, usually 25-year loans. Uh, our homeowner mortgage payments are used to build additional houses. Um, by this method, donated money is returned over time to Habitat in the form of the mortgage payments. This means that money given to a sponsor of a Habitat project keeps on working toward the donor's initial purpose to help people with a housing need to become homeowners. Uh, the cost for Habitat to build a three-bedroom house right now is around $140,000. Our last house closed appraised at $253,000. And, um, we hold two mortgages. One is that $140,000 that they pay back, and the other is the balance between the appraised value and that, uh, first mortgage. Um, we do that so that, you know, a family cannot flip a house immediately and make a big profit on Habitat. Um, our, our clientele are, um, basically, we're looking for the best of the low-income working class. Our homeowners must have an income in the range of 40 to 80% of the median income. And Avery County's median income right now, based on HUD's data, is $66,500. So the majority of our families, our homeowners, income is between $35,000 and $45,000. Um, and that's their total income for the family. We seek the people who have limited income but are also responsible individuals. Typical families are paying about all they can afford for rent that they can't afford. But what they can't afford doesn't provide them with a sufficient place to live. They often can't qualify for a loan at a bank. We're not a crisis response group or a provider of housing for the homeless. Avery Habitat is helping to solve chronic housing problems for persons who are responsible and competent individuals. Often, our participants would never own a house without our help. Habitat is, uh, making it possible for the working poor to join the ranks of property ownership, to enable them to have a capital asset, something that appreciates in value. Habitat helps create generational wealth and the pride in ownership. Uh, at this time, we're building with three families. Two more have been placed in existing homes that we are renovating, and eight more families are working on their sweat equity, paying into their closing costs, and waiting to start their construction of their house. Um, we've heard from so many people recently in the need, in need of better housing that we had to start a waiting list just to take their application. We're not able to take them all right now. And we have 24 families on that waiting list just to apply with us. So the need is, is great. The need is out there. The cost of building materials just keeps on rising. It's been difficult this past year. And in order for Habitat to keep building here in Avery County and placing new homeowners and houses, we are constantly in need of housing. Uh, sorry, of funding. We also will run out of land over the next five years. So land acquisitions are of real need right now. Help us to build more houses and place more families into homes.
Thanks for your report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be calling you.
Okay.
All right. We'll move down to 3.3B. Avery Fire Commission Update, Scott Heath.
Good evening.
Good times. I sure have to be reappointed next time.
I don't know. They both, they both. It's on purpose, man. Um, just so, we, last budget time, we had, uh, talked about, uh, me coming and giving y'all a, uh, a periodic update. We wanted it to be before now, but there's been some scheduling conflicts. But, um, just want to report on a few things. The biggest issue we have is El Park. That's been an ongoing issue. It's been ongoing for a year and a half on getting architects and getting things lined up. Uh, we've been ready to go. Meeting before last, we requested Brian to have the architect come before us because we've not heard from them and to see what the heck's going on. Because this needs to get moving. It's been too long. So we hope to get some answers this coming, thir, on Thursday, which will be our next meeting. To get that moving along, so. And with that delay, we've realized as we went through the budget process, our other fire stations on renovations, that's why we went ahead and tried to plan accordingly because it's taken so long to get those going. That we like to get them all going. Now, we also understand and thank you to, um, uh, uh, Mr. Barrier because we did receive a grant, or you all received a grant. We didn't receive that, being the Fire Commission. You all did, for money to allocate toward El Park volunteer fire department. Now, that is, we, I guess officially, we probably need direction for that money from y'all. But what my feeling is and what the general feeling is, because we have not talked about this formally in our meeting, but is that we would take that money and, and put that toward El, uh, El Park, getting that done, so that's taken care of. And then just moving Crossnor up a year or two and put it in that spot so that we get these done maybe two or three years earlier, which is, uh, you, we would think we'd see cost savings. But I would, I'd like to have some direction from y'all at some point, saying that, that's okay. A formal, this is how we want to handle it kind of thing. But that's kind of what we're looking to do. And it's different. We'd like to hear from that. So as a part of that funding program last budget time, part of that went to, uh, pay increases. We, during the budget process, we took it from that. We did have some pay increases, and, um, it's, we've not, it's not increased, increased the applications as much as we had hoped with the pay increase. But, um, we'd have gone from three vacancies to two, where normally was always three, but now we do have two. Uh, one application in, in the bunch. But we, um, we'll talk about that more during budget time to see if we need to do, if it's possible to do anything else there to try to increase our full-time people that we have. Now, the other issue was, the other thing we had in last year's budget was the stipend program, one that's been worked very successful in some places where volunteers get at least, uh, reimbursed for cost of gas and that kind of thing. Because volunteers, as we all know, has, has dropped off significantly over the last decade. So the stipend program, we're, we're happy to say, has, has increased, has worked, um, to some level across the whole, the entire county. And so, some of those monies aren't released until like every six months, or they don't do it right after the fact. So we don't have all those numbers in. But Brian has given me a number that Banner El was the, the worst in terms of having volunteers respond, where we go what you call the no response, or which would mean somebody from another district would have to come in and respond. But, um, they're telling me that that's been dropped by 80%. So that that is not near the issue and certainly the hot topic that it was, um, say, nine, 12 months ago. So we're seeing increasing much of that. Now, when we get to the budget time, we will look at that, um, just like we're going to look at our, um, each year. We just, we said that the capital outlay for, um, uh, fire stations will review each time. But, uh, we will also look at that and say, if a fire station didn't use all the money that was allocated, we could roll that over to the next time and still keep the same amount but not have to put in as much. So we're, we will have to review all of that coming here at the end of the budget time. But it's, it's encouraging right now. So, and also finally, um, so people understand that, uh, each, and every fire department gets audited. Uh, these audits are anywhere from $4,000 to $6,000 apiece, which, that, so we don't do that every year. We do have them on a two to three fire station audit, um, from an independent person, um, about every, so. We, we do two or three a year with 10 fires. So it puts us at about a four or five year. Everybody gets audited, um, every four to five years. And so we still continue to do that. And I think unless you have any questions, that's the bulk of what we've got going on.
Does the board have any questions that they want to ask Scott?
I haven't got any kind of a timeframe from that point.
Well, that's what I've been asking for probably eight months. What's the timeframe and that? And so, um, the meeting before last just directed Brian, we need answers. And what's the timeframe? Because this is an emergency service. It's a fire department. It's working out of storage containers and out of the old rescue squad for a year and a half. And that's not acceptable to us. They, they need to have their fire station. They need to be doing what they need to be doing out of facility. They need to be doing it in. And so I'm hoping that we can, uh, move them along to, to, to see what's going on and have a timeframe so we can come back and say, because it's crucial, because we're ready to start with this grant money. We're ready to then get Crossnor going too, and let's get all this done. And it's, it's, it's taking enormous amount of time.
Of course, the, the way the grant, the appropriation that we received from the state for the El Park Department, we need to be primarily, you know, we use for that first before anything else is done because that was the appropriation designation.
Correct.
So that would have to be done in primary. Uh, and then allow the, make using some of those others that we had, and earmark for that, then go to other areas. That would, uh, we would be clear that that was going. That would, we would be clear that that was going primarily for that department based on the appropriation.
Well, when we did our scheduling, our appropriations for the fire department renovation, it was super important that I made sure that that money is clearly to be designated for fire department renovation. I'm sure this would be too. Now, if things happen and there's extra on that, we can maybe roll it into the next station or whatever. And that savings would be fantastic. If the economy tanks, you may get some, you know, savings there too. Back when we redid, built the new Banner El school and redid the jail, that was '07, '08, I think. I mean, my personal business went right into the ditch, but we saved millions of dollars on public projects. So, but those things that they happen, they happen, but we can deal with them then. So, but I'm, I'm under the impression and advocate that all that money is designated just for these stations so that we can get them up to date since a lot of them have been, were built in the 50s. Thank you.
We thank you, Scott. All right, we'll move right along to 3.3C, Avery County Department of Social Services, Energy Assistance Program. Rockdale, would you please, you're already up there.
I'm here. Good afternoon, commissioners. I just wanted to update you on our current energy assistance programs that we have. We currently have the Crosses Intervention Program, which you've probably heard called SIP. It's a federally funded program. It assists individuals who are currently experiencing or in danger of experiencing life-threatening or health-related emergencies and need the heating assistance to, you know, for health, functioning, things like that. So that is our SIP allotment, $600 each for each household that qualifies. So far, we have approved 51 applicants as of November 1st. Our funds received this year are $49,749. And we have spent, as of November 1st, $29,314.71, which leaves us with a balance of $20,434.29 remaining. And starting December 1st, our LEAP Low Income Energy Assistance Program will start. That is for the households that qualify age 6 or older or disabled. And then January 1st, all households will qualify. So whatever we have, we still have, what funds left over that we've not exhausted, any household should qualify as long as they meet the income guidelines January 1st, regardless of age or children or disabilities. We did, last year, our FNS supervisor did request two more funds from the state, and we did receive an allotment around $10,000 for SIP. So we did receive some extra, and we actually did receive a little extra allotment for LEAP, but that was later on in the later this year.
Are we replying this year to try to get more?
We will if they give us an opportunity. That's something that they would just send out email. And whatever is left over from the other counties that they have not used, they ask the other counties that need it or if we can utilize it. And then they divide it up between each county that needs it. So we're not sure how much we'll get or when that will happen.
The reallocation of the budgeted amount, Mr. Reallocation wants the initial payments have been paid.
Yes. What is left over from, say, a county down towards the coast didn't use theirs, and they have $10,000 left over. So they, all the counties that do not use their funds, they place them together, and then they just divide them up for the need for the counties that need them. And we request what we can. And so it's, we don't know what we're going to get.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks for the report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We move right along to 3.3D, Taxic Ministry Report, Andrea Turp.
Good afternoon. Would you please approve our collections for the month of October, $1,478,123.35?
Move to approve.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, likewise.
Would you approve my releases of $442.36? $442.36.
Move to approve.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, likewise.
The next, I have a request to approve a property tax commission settlement. That one, I made a correction on a piece of land for this actual appeal. And we adjusted the bill amount by $223. And everybody has agreed to that particular amount. And I just need an approval on that.
Move to approve.
Say.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, likewise.
The next order is, I have the Headwaters Community. They have dated three pieces of property to the POA, and they applied for property tax exemption for the POA on those three pieces. Unfortunately, they applied late, so I have to bring it to you for approval. See if you have any questions on that.
That's for the current tax year?
That's for the current tax year, yes. So we would release those three bills that are included in the packet. We would release those three bills for this year. And then it wouldn't have a bill next year at all. And it is dated to the Property Owners Association. It is platted, the restrictions are listed in there, and it is platted. As part of it is a parking lot, the other two parts are drain fields for subject systems.
And the attorney knows next time to get these in on time?
And the attorney knows next time to apply on time.
Move to approve.
Sorry, ma'am attorney.
I didn't have anything to do with this.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, likewise.
And then our final order of business is our sales. Our sales from last year, we had 84 sales during the month of October. This year, we have 51 sales. Our, last year, our sales ratio for the month of October was 66%. This year, it's 68%. And if you just look through some of the sales that I included in the packet, prices are not coming down, people are not, sales are slowing down, but what people are paying for property, they're still paying higher prices. And if you have any questions about any of those sales I've added in there, we'd have to answer.
Where is 2275 North US 910?
That is right beside her neck. Right there on the corner, Ms. Brown's old house.
Built 1904.
Yeah. And it's, they started a remodel and it's not finished. So I don't know. That's all I've got for you.
Thank you.
Well, we thank you, thank your staff for the work that they do.
Oh, I do have one thing. I'm so sorry. I can't believe I forgot. I apologize. All of my appraisers, all of our appraisers are fully certified. Everybody's passed all the requirements for their certification through the Department of Revenue. So we're good to go, we're up and running.
All right, we'll go to 3.3F, Termination of Lease Agreement, Freedom Life Ministries.
3.3E is Resolution Declaring Real Property Surplus. And then we'll go to F.
Okay.
So the resolution before you commissioners is to declare what we call the Avery Cares Building as surplus property in order to sell that property. And we do need a motion. So move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed likewise. All right. Now we'll move on to 3.3F, Determination of the Lease Agreement, Freedom Life Ministries.
So we did lease the building to Freedom Life to name their office. And then when we found, they found it in bad condition, they realized that they couldn't use it. So we do need to terminate this lease in order to sell the property also. So we need approval for that termination of the lease.
Move to terminate. Second.
Just one more. All right. All in favor of terminating the lease agreement with Freedom Life Ministries, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, likewise? All right, 3.3G, A Resolution Regarding Expenditures of Opioid Settlement Funds.
And I'm going to call on Sarah Price to guide us through this resolution.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you for having me today. I appreciate it. My name's Sarah Price. I work for the High Country Council of Governments. Been working with Avery County on the administration and planning for the opioid settlement funds that the county has received. Included in your packet is a memo that I have written for you guys summarizing the process that the county has gone through throughout this process. County has received quite a bit of money from the opioid settlement funds and will continue to receive those funds over the next 18 years. I've worked with the county to make sure that all of those funds are properly maintained financially in your system. And then today, we're hoping to move forward with an authorization for expenditure of those funds. Back in April, I assisted with the first public input session for the use and planning of the opioid settlement funds. That meeting was held April 24th, earlier this year. At that time, the county solicited input from any community members or professionals that wanted to voice their thoughts on both the problem and solutions addressing some of the addiction crisis here in Avery County. Following that meeting, with the help of the county, an advisory committee was formed. This is an intentionally diverse committee to make sure that there is a wide representation of professionals and then individuals with personal experience on this advisory committee to make sure that there's just a wide variety of voices being heard on this issue here in the county. Following the, that process where the advisory committee was formed, I worked with the county again to put together a request for proposals. That was released at the very beginning of July, July 3rd, with a response due date of August 4th. In total, Avery County received three applications. The advisory committee met on August 21st to review those three applications. They did all receive those applications prior to the meeting, so they all had time to fully read all three applications and consider them individually. On August 21st, that advisory committee met and carefully reviewed each individual application. I do want it to be known that these applications were not compared to each other. They were simply scored for the requirements that were requested in the RFP process and then individually scored separately from each other. The advisory committee discussed each of the requests in the RFP process that were required from the nonprofits in their applications. And ultimately, the advisory committee did recommend full funding for all three organizations. Those three organizations were Freedom Life Ministries, as we've heard from, heard about. High Country Community Health was the second nonprofit that we received applications from. And Western Youth Network was the third nonprofit that the county received an application for funding. Following the review by the advisory committee, I started going through the process of what it would take for the county to actually authorize these funds and make sure that the county is spending them in the way that the state intended for the funds to be spent. Following a careful review of the authorization process that the county would have to undertake, it was determined that Western Youth Network's application would not be able to be funded in this particular round of funding because we, just understanding a little bit more about their application and what they were hoping to do with the funds, did not align with what the county is currently authorized to spend the money on at this particular time. So ultimately, the recommendation was for funding for Freedom Life Ministries as well as High Country Community Health. Before you, you have an authorization resolution that will need to be signed and approved by all of your commissioners for funding for those two nonprofits. This initial round of funding will just be for fiscal year '24, so grant date of ending on June 30th, 2024. This will be a shortened timeline this year just because it took a little bit for us to be able to get through all the process of what it would take for the county to fully authorize this funding. Next year, we are hoping to start this process again in January and bump up the, you know, bump up the timeline a little bit. So moving forward, the hope is to give nonprofits a full year to do programming and projects here in the county. But this first funding timeline, we're looking at about seven months. Would you guys have any questions or anything else I can further clarify either about the process that I've undertaken thus far with the county or any of the processes that would have to be undertaken in the future?
I think it's noted that the money spent out this year, all these are on a one-year cycle. They're not repetitive. So each year stands alone. And each year, agencies are encouraged to submit application based on the criteria presented on request proposal that meet the guidelines that are very clearly laid out in the opioid settlement provisions and the money's paid out. So each year, this will be a renewed process and renewed opportunity for, for organizations to submit applications for funding that will be considered by the committee and then brought before the group again. So each year, the cycle repeats itself. And we encourage anyone who is a part of this, who reaches out and has an organization that meets these needs to submit that application.
And included in your memo is also the scoring metric that was used by that advisory committee to individually assess each of those applications. And if you have any future questions, please feel free to reach out to me. My contact information is included in the memo that I provided for you.
Do we have any?
And I guess I just have something to add on that. We had discussed in the workshop, I attended a meeting earlier this year, put on by the NCACC, and they had recommended that any of the recipients of these funds sign an MOU indicating that they acknowledged how the funds would be used and that type of thing. It's my understanding from speaking with Mr. Barrier that Mr. Price is preparing that type of a document for the recipients to sign. I think that it needs to be made part of the resolution that none of the recipients will receive their money until they sign that memorandum.
Anyone else have any questions?
Were the amounts that we spoke about in the workshop?
$50,000 to Freedom Life and $50,000 to the AC. I guess, okay. So Michelle, is it your advice that we would sign the resolution and the MOU at our December meeting?
I mean, I think that it needs to be made part of the resolution that the recipients would sign that agreement saying that they understood how they're supposed to spend the funds. And if that won't be ready for approval by the board until next month, then the board could just approve all of it next month.
Okay. Thank you. Sarah?
Not wrong. Thank you.
Thank you for your answer.
Mr. Jenkins, do you want to speak? You had signed up for this.
Yes, ma'am. Is that okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The number one pill mill in America is the VA Hospital. All them opioids you're talking about? They go to veterans, unlimited supplies. Became addicted and homeless right here in the... Became addicted and homeless right here in this community. I don't see any mention of veterans in the operation of what's fixing to transpire. Ten percent of those people are veterans, maybe more. It's a known fact. I recently sent you the report provided to the United States Congress, the Housing and Urban Development, this the number three. Number three in all of rural America, homeless population. Number three, just as I said the first day I came here and you laughed at me. Let me tell you, these funds don't need to go to what you're talking about because doing the same things over and over and utilizing the same organizations over and over again, expecting a different result is the true definition of insanity.
Thank you. All right, we'll move right along to 3.4, our county manager's report, Philip Barryer, Jr.
Afternoon. First, it's a broadband update. Unfortunately for my households out there, it's not great news. The great grant, we haven't got our second quarter report. There's a, something in your notebook about that, so we will get that to you as soon as it's ready to go. Talked to Jeffrey Brooks today, they're moving as fast as possible on the cap grant. He's as frustrated as anyone else in the state, probably more than anyone else in the state, but the cap grant will come. So I know I've said that for the last six months, or I feel like the last six years, but affordable, reliable internet will come to Avery County.
When it gets here.
Sometime, when it gets here. So I'm sorry, I don't have better news on the broadband. Our DSSS building update, I think I put too many S's in there. DSS building update. Things are going well, spoke with them today, the week of Thanksgiving, they expect for us to go and go through a bunch list. So I'll keep you posted on that. The flooring has arrived, that should go in this week, and they're finishing up the painting and getting the cleanup done today. So we meet again with them on the 16th. And again, I told them that's two weeks from today, it's the twentieth, and that's when they expect to start to bunch this. So if you haven't had an opportunity, commissioners to go by, the building is looking really good. Some general updates, this might take just a minute. So after our workshop, I've been, took a couple of days last week and worked on workforce housing. And where Melanie, you know, can come in and help with those, up to eighty percent of the household median income. I've talked to several people, including Northwest Housing, about what are we gonna do about the eighty to one hundred and twenty percent that always get, you know, that kind of gets left out in the, in the shuffle. They can't qualify for the Habitat House, they can't qualify for HUD. So that's where we're focusing with them. Talked with Amy Wellness, I think everybody knows that's part of the Dogwood Health Trust. They're interested in helping do something here in Avery County. Also, talked with Sabalco, talked with USDA. There are some first-time loans with USDA and it's also, so some loans with some of our local banks. So trying to do something about housing affordability. Y'all saw in the packet that Andrea just gave us what homes are selling for. So the time is now, we've got to do something. Also, had a conversation with Sabalco. Y'all remember the meeting we had there, they talked about needing more employees and we talked to them about we need housing for those employees to live in. So I'm hoping they'll put their, some of their three thousand acres where their money's at and help donate some land or sell some good flat land that we can afford to build some housing for that group that falls within the eighty to one twenty percent range of the HUD income threshold. So just know that we're working on that. Freedom Life reentry program's still working, they're still open, working on housing, transportation, legal fees, basic food needs, medical needs and jobs. Met with them last week, they gave me a report. And in your packet, you'll see that we did file for an extension on the application for the reentry housing. There's also something in your packet today from Whammy. Just want to thank Whammy for what they do. You know, take, going in and making homes warmer and better secure, better heat systems, just makes for better living conditions for our citizens, so I just want to thank Whammy for what they do. Did want to mention in your packet also that the senior center is collecting socks and gloves for the elderly and for children, and there's bins placed in the building, so please help get those filled up and tell your local churches and any other organizations. Fortuna Fox will be at the VFW in Newland, over here on the hill, this Friday. I forgot to write down the time, but it's in your packet, so that's to, for the commemoration of the Vietnam War 50th year. Today, started our radio tower upgrade with our radio system. Thanks for the weather, couldn't have been better. We did have a meeting with all the chiefs, police chiefs, fire chiefs. Lisa McCray was also here on November 1st, so we would be prepared today for that, so haven't heard any bad news, so I'm going to say that everything went well today and is still going well today. Just a reminder that the Veterans Breakfast honoring the veterans at the senior center, it's Thursday morning at eight o'clock, so I hope everyone can be there. Want to mention the Solid Waste Holiday Schedule because with the Thanksgiving holiday coming up, the sites will be closed as normal on Wednesday, also on Thursday. The sites will open back up on Friday and the landfill will be closed Thursday and Friday, but will open back up on Saturday. So we've got that on our Facebook page and on the website and all the sites will also have the information. The EDC Committee for our strategic plan, they met October 13th. Again, I want to thank all those volunteers for serving on that committee, thought it went very well. There is an online survey that takes a little time, on Facebook and on our webpage, that I would love to have every household in the county to please submit a, one of those surveys. So my goal is to have a thousand responses for that survey, that would be awesome. So if y'all can help push, I've asked the school system to also help push that survey about what Avery County wants for Avery County. So again, they, their, that team is meeting again on December 1st, so I thank them for that. And I believe with that, that's it from the manager.
All right, we'll move right along to 3.4 B, Finance Officer's Report.
Good afternoon, Board. I have several items for your consideration this afternoon. Item number one, the Avery County Sheriff's Office has received a grant from the International Association of Chiefs of Police for victim services position. This grant will cover the position at one hundred percent for two years. Request the Board to accept the grant and approve the following budget amendment to debit grant salary forty-one thousand nine hundred and thirty-three dollars. FICA administration, three thousand two hundred and eight dollars. Retirement, five thousand five hundred and seventy dollars and fifty-six cents. Group insurance, thirteen thousand four hundred and eleven dollars. 401K retirement, one thousand two hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Supplies grants, twenty thousand five hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Maintenance contracts, five thousand four hundred dollars and credit IACP grant, ninety-one thousand three hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty-six cents.
Move to proof.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed likewise?
Item number two, the Department of Planning and Inspections has requested a full-time ordinance administrator position. Part of this position was budgeted and available for appropriations and the remaining would come from fund balance. Request the Board to approve the following budget amendment to debit grant salary thirty thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars. FICA administration, two thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Retire, retirement, three hundred, or three thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Group insurance, eight thousand eight hundred and forty-one dollars and thirty-three cents. 401K retirement, nine hundred and sixteen dollars and forty-four cents. Training, one thousand dollars. Utilities, internet, sixty dollars. Cell phone, four hundred and forty dollars. Travel, five hundred dollars. Gas, diesel fuel, eight hundred dollars. Uniforms, three hundred dollars. Capital outlay, seven thousand dollars. Credit available for appropriations, thirty-two thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. And fund balance appropriated, twenty-four thousand forty-two dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Will all of that appear in the budget next year?
Yes. And, and there'll be more salary because that salary is not for a full twelve months, that's just for the remaining of the fiscal year.
That's what I was getting at.
Yeah.
Do I hear a motion that we approve the budget amendment?
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise?
Item number three, due to the upcoming retirement of the current business personal property appraiser, the Tax Administration Department would like to request a full-time temporary position. This will allow the new hire to be fully trained and move into the permanent full-time position on July 1st. Request the Board to approve the following budget amendment to debit salary business property, business personal property, nineteen thousand seven hundred and sixty-three dollars. FICA administration, one thousand five hundred and twelve dollars and credit fund balance appropriated, twenty-one thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Move to proof.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise?
Item number four, the EMS department would like to request an upgraded EMS space at Green Valley. This will construct a building that would contain adequate sleeping quarters, common area, kitchen space and space for two ambulances and a E911 backup facility. Request the Board to approve the following budget amendment to debit capital outlay building improvement, three hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. And to credit fund balance appropriated, three hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars.
Does that, does that include the space for the church building?
Yes. An office building. Yes. With a bathroom.
Yeah.
All right, do I hear a motion to approve the budget?
So move. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I will say that this was one of the items that we sought state appropriation for that we were denied, but we are going ahead with the project locally because we feel the importance is there. But it would have been great to have gotten a little help from downstairs on this.
Yes, absolutely. And we're still hopeful maybe some other monies could come in to help offset the funding for this project. Item number five, the Department of Solid Waste is requesting additional funds for the purchase of a new roll-off truck. Originally, the truck was budgeted at two hundred and two thousand dollars, but actual costs have come in at two hundred and eighty-five thousand. In order to purchase the truck, the difference will need to be approved. Request the Board to approve the following budget amendment to debit capital outlay equipment, eighty-three thousand dollars and credit fund balance appropriated, eighty-three thousand dollars.
I hear a motion to approve the amendment.
Move to proof.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed likewise?
Item number six, the Avery County Sheriff's Office is requesting the purchase of a Bearcat Tactical Response Vehicle. This vehicle would aid in response to certain catastrophic events. Request the Board to approve the following budget amendment to debit capital outlay auto, three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, one hundred and ninety-six, three hundred and ninety-five thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars and the credit fund balance appropriated, three hundred and ninety-five thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars.
I hear a motion to approve the budget.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise?
I will say on this discussion with Sheriff earlier, six months ago, I would have questioned this highly. But the, and as a matter of fact, I did question this. But the, the current climate that we live in and the incidents that we've had this year has changed my mind, frankly. And yes, that can happen, not very often, but it can happen. And the, the need for this has been, become more apparent and going forward, give tools to be in situations that unfortunately in our world seem to be increasingly more common and maybe prevent officers being fired on, civilians being fired on and provide a tool that could be used to bring about a peaceful resolution to a system that might be very insinuating. So just wanted to say that as we, as we move forward, we do have to adjust to the situations that we face each day. I want to thank Parker for being a part of that.
Well, and also I think we can, it can be used not only just for law enforcement, but I, we have discussed maybe when you have floods or elite rescue personnel, places to get to, that it could actually be used for those type, those type of things. I think it's a valuable tool.
And if one time we did have a piece of junk, just exactly what we thought when we got it was a piece of junk and we didn't need that, so now it's time to ask them if they can get out and go and do what they need to do.
It was a free piece of junk.
Yeah, it was, and we had to haul it off.
Luckily, we never needed it.
All right.
All right. Different climate.
Thank you, Board. Item number seven, the Avery County Sheriff's Office is requesting the purchase of tactical helmets equipped with communication devices and other accessories. These will offer protection and improve communication for the sheriff's special response team. Request the Board to approve the following budget amendment to debit capital outlay equipment, thirty-three thousand fourteen dollars and fifty-seven cents and credit fund balance appropriated, thirty-three thousand fourteen dollars and fifty-seven cents.
I hear a motion to approve the budget amendment.
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise?
You're killing us.
I'm almost there, almost to the end. You'll have to look back at those previous meetings where we didn't have any fund balance appropriation. Item number eight, the Avery County Sheriff's Office is requesting the purchase of a new drone system. The sheriff's current drone is an older model and was damaged in a recent incident. Request the Board to approve the following budget amendment to debit capital outlay equipment, fourteen thousand one hundred and twenty-three dollars and three cents and the credit fund balance appropriated, fourteen thousand one hundred and twenty-three dollars and three cents.
I hear a motion to approve the budget amendment.
Move to proof.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise?
Do we want to, table number nine, or we could continue with appropriation and just not have the MOA in the resolution?
I think that would be fine.
To go ahead and approve this amendment to the budget and we'll have this one piece out of the way. So item number nine, to appropriate opioid settlement funds in accordance with the MOU guidelines, the annual budget ordinance must be amended to equal the allocations below. That is going to be to recognize one hundred thousand dollars of opioid settlement funds revenue and to appropriate fifty thousand dollars to Freedom Life Avery and fifty thousand dollars to High Country Community Health.
Do I hear a motion to approve the budget amendment?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise?
Thank you, Board. And I want to brag on the High Country Council of Governments and Sarah, who has made this very complicated process. who has made this very complicated process a lot easier on me. And just thankful for what a resource that we have in there. It's been very great.
Thanks, Caleb.
Thank you all.
Thanks up to that.
We might all leave with a headache, but we thank you. Okay, so don't add them up, right?
Don't add it up.
Okay. All right, we'll move right along to...
But I'll make a comment. I just want to thank this Board. Because this Board's attitude is not to kick it down the road. And I thank you, Board, because we are doing the right thing. You've done the right thing for the citizens today, and I thank you.
All right, we'll move right along to three point four C, our county attorney's report. Michelle, do you have anything?
I don't have anything that requires action by the Board. I think he's addressed everything that I've heard.
And more.
All right. Three point five staff reports and requests. Nothing there, Mr. Barry?
No, there's not, Madam Chairman.
Three point six, closed session. Do we have anything to go in closed session for, Michelle?
I do not have anything.
All right. Three point seven, approval of the minutes. We had a regular session on September the eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. We had a regular session October the second, two thousand and twenty-three. And we had a closed session October the second, two thousand and twenty-three. Do I hear a motion to approve? The minutes are done by consensus.
No.
No, I've jumped too far.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
All right, then.
Say it.
All in favor, say aye. Now we'll go to three point eight, the agenda consent items. We had it in our packet and been able to read them and accept them by consent if we don't have any concerns of the commission. All right. Three point nine, I think Philip has done a good job on the informational items and the things that we need to be going to and, like we said, our Veterans Breakfast will be Thursday at eight o'clock at the Senior Center. Three point ten, upcoming meetings. We have a meeting in December.
December the fourth.
Fourth.
Our Employee Christmas Lunch is December thirteenth, from two to one-thirty at the Act Building. And then our January meeting is January first. Offices are closed, county offices are closed, so we need to come and decide. Of course, that will be a special meeting then. What day? Do what?
We usually take the next day and...
We can do it on Tuesday, or we can wait till the next, whatever you want to do.
Does anybody have a suggestion?
On the second.
Well, Cindy, we'll just leave that up to you then, and nobody cares, so...
Okay, we'll just do it on the second then.
Okay.
Next, on Tuesday. That will be considered a special meeting.
All right. Does any commissioner have anything else to say? We do want to thank everybody that stayed with us through the big, long agenda, and we thank our department heads. Caleb, even though you give us a headache, we thank you for you.
Sheriff's Office gave that.
All right, Mikey, Cindy.
I just want to say thank you for the approving that. That's equipment we hope we never have to use, but we will. We know that from the four instances we've had this year. It's going to be a way for us to keep public safety, not only our safety, folks that we're trying to rescue, individuals in crisis situations like we've experienced. It'll just give us a better platform to operate on and give us more capabilities in bringing those things to successful conclusion. So thank you. I appreciate you.
We thank you for what you did.
I'd like to thank the Board for the reinforcement and transportation, Board. I appreciate it.
I'd like to thank the Board also. This is, this is great. There's some questions about the officer's back room because instead it was a storage room. It was just a, a large room, so we're going to have an office set up for them with their side door just for them to have this room, just for them to have access to that, so. And then if they need to cook something or something, they have access to the other part of the building too.
For a feet?
For a feet.
For a feet, yeah.
Well, they'll have to cook, they'll have to cook for us.
But thank you. Now, one board is coming tomorrow to do an assessment. So they're supposed to be here at eight o'clock in the morning, so looking forward to that. A lot of hoops we've had to jump through to get everything up and going like it needs to be, but they've been very good to check with us and see if anything we need, so we'll report back after they get done with that and let you know how everything went with that, so. But thank you all for everything.
And go ahead and tell them about the, you know, you said earlier Friday afternoon about the mapping.
GSI mapping.
That's another agenda item.
Sorry. Never mind. I'll send Janine there.
Yeah, so thank you.
Thank you, Mike. All right, Woody's got to go. He said I could let him go at five o'clock, but I believe I've...
Done good.
Done good.
Did very good.
Do I hear a motion that we quote this meeting then? Do I hear a second? All in favor, you can go to your designated place.
They're signing.
Extra sending facilities, and they're moving later in the process. The Board had it already done, so they're... They weren't being at that much more, so it just makes that in the process, and the collateral. It takes several months, yeah, it takes a little time. There are all sorts of requirements that all people have got to bring to...